Oh, is that right? Yeah. I know.
So there's typically five. There yeah. Yeah, there is, yeah. Three, yep.
That was. That was before I got on the board, he was just telling me about how that was like a big issue to resolve. And then, you know, once they got dissolved, we had all these lines or applications.
You can, yeah, yeah, I would recommend to everyone.
But that's.
So, I mean, you wouldn't have to do it.
I work for Mesa. I'm I'm a communications.
Um, well, we'll have to. Yeah.
Oh, five years, oh, you know exactly.
I mean, you can always see how things are going. It's not going in your direction.
I I'm very Mesa.
Yeah.
Two, before then, I worked in the state.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, alright, okay, yeah, oh, that's when I was, so twenty years ago, I was a reporter at the Lansing State Journal.
Oh, okay.
It's not, I mean, I don't wanna, but doesn't seem like it's going that well.
No.
Did you, and so. Just stopped, I know.
And it's all the same.
I know, so.
But and it costs more for the journal.
Yeah, it's a smaller paper, that's why, really had to make up those.
I can't I can't blame them, I understand what the problem is. And I I couldn't just see extra, uh, just about sixty bucks a month.
Local newspapers are. Yeah, it's it's a shame too, and it's not just the journal, it's a lot of it's across the country. And you know, once the internet came, I know newspapers were nervous, but now you get more than just, you know. It's not just websites, you get Instagram and Twitter and all these other and 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 streaming services. There's so many ways to get news now, and it's just so much competition, you only have so much market.
Because, and once it is still free, it's hard to compete with free.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, but, you know, and that's that's also another problem too, people don't really care about qualities.
They can't read the whole article.
Younger, the younger generation, they just, you know, they want it on a quick and fast and whatever, you know. So, it's a challenge. You just didn't read all of it. Yeah, yeah, that's weird, I grew up, um.
I have her number upstairs, so I'm gonna go see if I can give her a call too, what's going on?
It's just, as little kid, that's what made me not wanna be a newspaper reporter, now.
Is that right? Okay. Oh, they had news in them, I know, those are just almost non-existent.
Yeah, it's too bad, when I, when they left the the building downtown. Few years back, that was that was kind of the beginning of.
They started cutting down their staff so much.
Former coworker, I saw a former coworker two weeks ago downtown. And, uh, she 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 took a payout, because they were. She took a payout last year. Too bad. Are these televised as well?
Yeah.
Oh, these are taken. Oh, no. Like transportation.
It is. I think that they only televise as long as they meet.
Okay.
So, eight at three in the morning.
Yeah, I need to televise that, two girl.
Watching Brownfield meetings, not expecting. I said I never want to.
Better than watching paint dry, that's the question.
They're dealing with numbers and that doesn't come across.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't. And the ZBA meets every.
Once a month.
So this is the one you're talking about?
She didn't answer, I text her too, so.
What's your suggestion, Keith?
So, we can either hold off till next month, or we can go ahead with three, but we'll have to elect. Uh, chair in order to have the meeting, basically.
Um, I mean, you'd need to walk me through all that stuff, but I could.
Yeah, and I mean, it's also up to the applicants too, as to whether or not they want a full board to hear. Um, their case or not, because, I mean, but there's always the potential that we don't have a full board next month as well.
Are they all here, applicants?
Yeah.
Then you can ask.
Yeah.
Go ahead and.
Yeah.
Do a little poll survey, whatever.
They have more people.
They they they're in a different direction.
Okay, I know, yeah, so, I guess, we'll just go one by one if. Uh, our first case, if you guys wanna hold off, or if you wanna go forward, then what's, what would you like?
We'll go ahead.
Okay, uh, two.
We'd like to move ahead.
Okay, and then three, you guys? Same, okay, so, we'll have to go as is. So you're the chair.
Okay.
Maybe you knew.
By default, so, we just have to open the meeting, do roll call.
All right, uh, opening the meeting for March twentieth of the ZBA for Meridian Township. Um, start with roll call, oh, Phil DeShing.
Oh, you're Truice.
No longer on the board.
Oh, sorry, uh, member Truice.
Here.
Member McCurtis, sorry.
Sorry, here.
And, uh, member Bennett is here.
An agenda approval.
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second. No oppositions, so, it is approved.
I'm over the approval of the minutes of December twenty 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 three.
Second that.
I didn't see anything that required corrections or.
Okay.
Awesome, did not, so.
So you seconded, oh, I can second that, second, yeah.
And, uh, not opposed, so that is approved. Um, we just move forward to.
Communications, um, we can address these, they're on the record for each case individually. So, new business.
Alright.
Did we not get another communication today?
Yes.
Yes, we did, there's two that I sent you on Monday, and then there's the additional one that you should have received today.
And that's not listed here?
They're not on here, no, nope.
Those will be provided in the next.
Yeah, those will be, yep, right in.
Move on to, uh, new business now, alright, um, moving on to ZBA case number twenty four dash zero one. At thirty six eighty nine Vanetta Road.
Okay, so, the applicant's requesting a variance, uh, from section eighty six, six, three sixty eight D two. Minimum material lot width two hundred feet, uh, the applicant has requested a variance to create three new parcels from one parcel. Uh, one of the proposed parcels is under the minimum lot width requirement of two hundred feet at thirty six eighty nine Vanetta Road. Uh, the property is approximately twenty one point eight eight acres in size and is owned by our rural residential. The submitted site plan shows a three thousand eighty one square foot, single family home and detached garage. That was constructed in two thousand thirteen and tw- two thousand nineteen respectively, that currently occupies the lot. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot width of two hundred feet, and the applicant is proposing to create three lots with widths of. Three hundred ninety two point six five feet, two hundred and sixty four point seven five feet, and one with a width of sixty six feet. The applicant is requesting a hundred and thirty four foot variance for the creation of the sixty six foot wide parcel.
That's where we call the applicant up, right?
Yeah, so the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Alright, and would you please state your name and your address, just for the record?
Sure, my name is Steve Grayer, I live at thirty six eighty nine Vanetta Road. And I am the owner of the house and of the property at that address. So, the points that I wanted to make to the committee on this variance is that I have bought this pro- property three years ago. As a retirement property, I bought it based on its beauty, I bought it on the setting of the house. So it was one of the main selling points of that house. There is nothing that I would request from this committee that would affect my appreciation. Of the setting or the beauty that I am currently living on. So for the last three years, I have worked hard at this house and land to cultivate the beauty. And the natural setting, there were gardens that had to be restored, dead trees that had to be removed, fences that needed to be mended. Barns that needed to be repainted and restored, so I have worked hard to try to improve what I moved into. Um, I will continue to live in this property until either I can't live there anymore, or I decide that I have to move elsewhere. The current acreage is just under twenty two acres. Um, I have the largest lot size along Vanetta Road. If you look at the average lot sizes that are along Vanetta Road, they range two to ten acres. There are two other, uh, lots that are approximately twenty acres. But what I'm trying to do is simply do what everybody else has done along Vanetta Road over the years. One of the major things is I worked hard when I set up the sale of these properties to put some very. Detailed restrictions on what could be built and how it would be maintained. One of the important things that comes under the purview of getting a variance is to maintain the beauty. And the natural use of the land, all of the peripheral trees on my land are in the restrictions to be maintained. They can't be removed, additionally, if the two houses were to be built on these ten acres. They would be required to put in additional trees that would be between the houses and my house. In order to maintain privacy and beauty and even privacy for those homes. The lawns would need to be maintained as they currently are, fences erected, housing styles that would need to be approved by myself. So that they would be in kind with the current structure that's on the property. In other words, I don't wanna change and make this into a neighborhood that's crowded by houses. I would like to have somebody help me maintain that land as it currently is. It's getting to be a little bit difficult for me over the three years to maintain all twenty two acres. If I had one or two homeowners with smaller lots that could help. We would work to maintain the beauty of those two five acre lots. The current people that are interested in this land are all looking at the full ten acres. And they all want their property towards the back of the ten acres, but all three of these people are both. Are either realtors or builders, and I have little doubt to suspect that, once they buy the ten acres. They're going to apply for variances to put in houses along that ten acres. My job as a homeowner is to protect that beauty of the land. Therefore, only two houses, I'm not building a subdivision like one of our. Uh, letter writers has maintained, I just wanna put two houses up that can share in the beauty of it. I do not wanna look out onto a neighborhood, I wanna look out on the natural beauty. If you look at the Realtors' data, the average home that's sold. Wants no more than two to five acres, if you look at the land that I have. And the land will be sold at some point in time, whether it's now or in the future, what I'd like to do is control. That land as best as possible and not allow somebody to just put houses in its place. The banks, as they look at the value of the home, my current home is valued as the home plus no more than ten acres. Therefore, the other twelve acres that I own doesn't come into its value. If I'm gonna maximize the value of my home for sale in the future, and it will be sold. Is bring that acreage down to a reasonable level that somebody's gonna be interested in buying. Because I was the only one that got was interested in buying the twenty two acres. So I'd like to see my land around my house be maximized for value down to twelve acres. And establish two five acre lots on top of that. I have talked with Realtors, I have talked with bankers in order to verify these numbers. I have had an attorney review the restrictions to make sure that they are reasonable restrictions in order to maintain the beauty. And, as I said to begin with, and in summary, what I do here on the land. Is not to make it ugly, not to build a profit, all I want is some help in maintaining it. And then also making it beautiful for two additional owners in a very nice setting, thank you.
Thank you.
Public, yeah.
Uh, gonna open up now for any anyone of the public who wants to speak, if you wanna speak, just go ahead and come up, say your name and your address and.
Um, I'm Penny Ostrom, I live at three six six three Vanetta Road. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I have two points from earlier that I want to emphasize, but first, I wanted our neighbors to know. That I've appreciated everybody that has lived at thirty thirty six eighty nine Vanetta Road in current, including the current neighbors. Now, the first neighbor that we had was Joyce Grover, she took care of that property until she was eighty three years old. However, in her later years, probably past the age of seventy nine, we helped wrangle horses and tractors. We addressed felled trees and brush hogged the entire twenty acres for her numerous occasions. And so, we have a great familiarity with that property, and the issue that I brought up with the stream is a very real one. If we place asphalt and housing on, housing on the, uh, ten acres, on ten of the acres. That will pre- prevent tens of thousands of gallons of water, um, from entering the subsurface. Where it could otherwise be taken up by grass and trees and shrubs. The burden of that water is going to be felt by, uh, properties to the west and to the north. And it's gonna pose a higher risk for flooding for Vanetta Road as a whole. Um, amendments to the property, amendments to the property such as fertilizers and pesticides and herbicides. Um, will eventually, once they reach a permeable surface, will eventual- will enter the groundwater and affect every one of the wells. That serve as drinking water for every single house on Vanetta Road, including thirty six eighty nine. Having lived on Vanetta Road for decades, we have spoken to thousands of people. Who have a unified singular perception of the road as one of the most beautiful township. It is one of about a hundred and eleven natural beauty roads in this, in the state. The most poignant comment that I ever received from a friend who lives in Lansing was. Why in the heck would I go up north to the tunnel of trees when I have one here on Vanetta Road? The beauty that township residents enjoy, whether they walk through Leg Park or they drive down the road, is not confined to the road. It comes from the platitude of woods and fields and houses dotting the landscape nestled amongst currently. Uh, cur- uh, naturally occurring forest, this kind of environment is perhaps unique to Vanetta Road. And something we can't recreate, and it is in contrast to housing placed one in back of another, even on a few acres. We see ourselves, everyone here, I imagine, sees themselves as owning a property. When in re- reality, we reside on it temporarily, as such, we have the auspicious role of being stewards on that land. And we are endowed with the responsibility of maintaining its beauty for our children and our children's children of the township as a whole. Nathaniel and I hope to live in and leave a legacy of natural peace and quietude that is maybe uniquely characteristic of Vanetta Road. A legacy that we hope is embraced by the township as a whole.
My, my name is Charlie Decamp, um, we live at thirty six twenty three Vanetta, it's the old farmhouse. Um, several houses from the proposed split property. And, uh, it's interesting that I, I I know, we've been there for forty years, and we bought our retirement property forty years ago, basically. We've been there that long and we have no intention of of ever leaving. Um, when we look back at the forty years, when we got there in the early nineteen eighties, uh, Joyce and Don Grover were already there. It's, it's interesting that we're, that we're talking about these people who are now long gone. Um, they cleared the property, they built the original house, um, it was Joyce Grover into her eighties. Who, uh, got on that tractor every week or two weeks and 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 cleared that property, um, every, every time. And maintained a beautiful property, the the lawn wasn't there, it wasn't perfect. But it was good enough that that, uh, Dr. Grover maintained a golf course, he had a little mini golf course on that thing. And so, they enjoyed the wide open spaces of Meridian Township, um, they rejoiced in it. And and we also do too, and I see this as an important opportunity, it's an opportunity. For this zoning board, it's an opportunity as, as we, a community. To maintain some of the the most important natural spaces, beautiful spaces within Meridian Township. Um, when those spaces are gone, they are gone for good, they they won't come back. And I absolutely appreciate, um, the right of of the current property owners. To, um, sell what portion of the property that they want, but I would ask this board to maintain the current standards of zoning. Um, uh, they can still sell that property, uh, we we don't have to build the maximum number of houses on that property. Um, as as described, we can keep it down, so I ask that we we not support the variance.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Alright, with that, I think we go into board time, right? So, thoughts?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, Keith, can you scroll down to the drawings of the proposal, that's the one. Um, and I'd ask the applicant to make sure I'm reading this or understanding this correctly.
So, you look at the.
You'll have to get to the mic, sir.
Yeah, okay, I thought I had a pretty good voice. Alright, oh, here, I'll look across like that, so, if you're looking at that, you got Vanetta Road on the bottom. We've got the front five acres approximately, which is outlined in the pink color. You've got the, and that has the two hundred plus road frontage on it. There is a sixty six foot wide strip that's outlined in yellow. That would be for a road to be gravel road, whatever, to be developed back to the back property, which is another five acres. Uh, again, none, this is all done with the restrictions in mind, not removing any trees or altering anything else.
I I would just say to you, I I appreciate your intent, but that has nothing to do with the zoning.
Correct.
Because this is between you and whoever you sell the property to, we can only look at what the zoning requires. And I was interpreting the drawing correctly, it looks like almost a sixty six foot easement through there. But it's actually gonna be deeded to them as a, as a roadway.
Yes.
Driveway to the rear.
Correct.
That's what I thought I saw, okay.
Have a question.
Yeah.
So the current home that's there now, that's the the front part of this, uh?
Yeah, you, that, the home itself sits about a third of the way back or so on the property. Um, over towards the southern, towards the southern boundary lines, there we go.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I, uh, do a rebuttal, so to speak?
Um, sure, go ahead.
So, uh, some of the things that were noted in the letters, particularly if you look at the Decamp's letter. Uh, they talk about, um, a highly developed neighborhood. Oh, I'm not putting, uh, one house on each acre or one house on two acres, I'm putting two houses in ten acres. Which still maintains nearly five acres of land for each of these houses. Um, and as a. And as opposed to their opening statement about the proposed lots do not meet the minimum lot width, the front lot certainly meets the 200-plus footage that needs to be on Van Ada Road. So, I find very little worth in the letter that they've written. When you look at the Ostrom's letter, the, let me just find my notes on that. Well, let's go to what Peggy had to say, first of all. Unless you guys know of it, I don't know of any study that supports that Van Ada Road will be flooded by putting a house up in the front of the property nor a roadway.
After you do the calculations for it.
No, I would like a study presented by an engineering firm that shows that there would be flooding of Van Ada Road. So, you don't have one, do you?
I have PhDs.
Well, let's not get into the background.
She talks about adding fertilizer. Well, the whole lot's been fertilized for years and years. We've added no further fertilizing to it and neither would any houses because I'm already fertilizing the land. A house is going to be placed on the front property regardless. So, it meets the footage requirement, so there will be a house on the front. The only thing we're talking about here is whether we put a house towards the back of the lot. So, that doesn't disturb the beauty of Van Ada Road or the surrounding area, particularly if the lawns and the trees are maintained. So, you know, there's concerns. It's quite an extensive dissertation that is outlined here, but I don't see where they made a point that the beauty of the road or the land is going to be affected. He talks about the fact that his stables have been flooding. He doesn't have any stables. He's got an open barn that stores tractor equipment.
No, we have six stables, and we've had five horses on that property.
But you don't currently...
This is not a debate.
Okay, right. That's okay.
Can you address the board, please, and not...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's probably a better way to do it. All right, I'm not going to take that any further, okay? I just, I appreciate the board's time. Thank you very much.
Real quick, before you go to sit down, sir, real quick. Real quick, can I, I just have one more question. I'm sorry, I can come right back up.
Go ahead.
Just this area outlined in pink that I'm looking at, I see that it says non-building area, so...
I can't read it from...
We've got it on the east side listed as non-building in the back half of that lot.
Yes.
From Van Ada.
So, the restrictions that I put in, we don't want our visual line affected by houses as we sit on our back deck and look out. We'd like to see the beauty of the land also. So, the house in the back five acres would be built towards the back based on the restrictions in the house, and that pink area would be up towards the front. Any waterways, as Nathaniel has talked about in his dissertation, is, are to be maintained and preserved however possible so that that ephemeral waterway that he talks about will be maintained and will continue in its natural use and beauty.
All right. That was the only question I had. Thank you for clearing that up for me. I think we'll move into discussion now.
Also, yeah. Thanks. So, I have a question for, it's probably for the staff, Keith.
Yeah.
What is, what is the property zone for? Is it zone for a building? I mean, what, what is the zoning?
Yeah, so it's a single... Single-family residence is what it's zoned for.
So, is it, is, so it's 22 acres?
Yes.
But is it, does, does it allow for two more homes to be built there? I mean...
Well, under the current zoning, it would, they would be able to split off one more parcel. So, the variance, though, is to have the three in total as opposed to the two that are currently allowed under the ordinance.
It's currently rural residential, which requires, what, a one-acre lot?
It's 40,000, yeah, square feet, and then 200 feet of frontage.
Right. Actually, essentially, one, one structure per acre maximum.
Yeah, if you look at it that way.
If you, if you can maintain your frontage.
Correct.
What I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
So, where I'm struggling on this is the, the first criterion, just because the circumstance does feel self-created, being that there is enough space to have two, 200-foot frontages there, and one of them is drastically underneath. And I get the idea that was just to be a driveway, but this is kind of what I'm struggling with right now.
I think I agree with you. Essentially, the applicant could divide this 20-acre lot in two and have all the frontage he needs to build one house on each one. What he is asking to do is change the frontage requirements so that he can build a third home on these lots. And I don't see that as something that is unique to this property that would meet the requirements of the first listed standard.
Right. I agree.
And I don't think a strict application of the zoning would prevent or create practical difficulties that would prevent it from using the property for its permitted purpose, which is to build a residence. So, I don't see him meeting the second one. I guess granting the variance is an interim action necessary, which would carry out, it wouldn't carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, though. It would carry out his desires, but it doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance, so I don't see him making three. And I don't know if the variance itself would adversely affect adjacent land. I've heard statements from neighbors that it could change the character and the drainage of the area. So, I don't have the information necessary to reach a decision on that. And the fifth criteria is generally consistent with public interest in the purpose and the intent of this chapter, and I don't believe that it necessarily meets that either. So, I would be voting against this.
I agree. Any other comments?
No other comments from me. It's pretty clear.
Move to vote then? Next? All right. Motion to vote for ZBA case number...
Excuse me. Can he, can he show you another drawing before you vote? Because...
Unfortunately, we've pretty much moved past public comment and the...
If, if he wishes to file a different variance or a different drawing, he can present that in a different manner. It's not for us to determine whether there's another alternative, it's to determine whether this alternative is appropriate.
Okay.
I do apologize, but motion to vote on ZBA case number 24-01.
I make a motion that the zoning board of appeals deny the request for zoning variance in ZBA case 24-01.
Second.
And any opposed?
We need to vote on an actual...
Oh, oh.
Oh, oh, vote.
All right. Members, remember Richard Zeiss?
Yes.
Remember McCurtis?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Do we just move right into... Yeah, so the variance was denied, so we'll move on to case number 24-02. 24-02, 5867 Boys' Eel Drive. The applicant intends to replace an existing deck on the northwest corner of the existing single-family home that was built in 1982. According to our assessing department records, the existing deck, which was constructed in 1989, measures approximately 24 feet by 18 feet in area with a 10-foot by 12-foot screened enclosed porch on top. The applicant intends to replace the deck with a new enclosed deck. I don't know what that is, which measures approximately 16 feet 1 inch by 18 feet 4 inch in area. So, this property was approved as a special use permit in 1969 as condos and apartment buildings. And sometime between then and the early 1990s, lot lines were added to the development. So, this caused this property, as well as many others, to have issues with setbacks and other non-conformities. So, this proposed deck would encroach into the required side yard setback. So, the deck is permitted to encroach into the side yard setback eight feet, but be no closer to any lot line than eight feet. It's shown located at four feet 7 inches at its closest point from the side property line and encroaches three feet 5 inches into the side yard setback. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance of three feet 5 inches to allow the proposed deck to encroach into the required side yard setback. All right. The applicant would like to come up, state your name and address for the record.
We are Carrie and Brandon Lardy. We live at 5867 Boys' Eel Drive in Hazlet, and we are the property owners. We have lived there since 2005, as was stated. This was the deck on the property when we moved into it. One of the reasons we purchased the home was because it sits right on a small lake in Lake of the Hills subdivision. Having a deck, having a large deck was a draw in purchasing the home so that we could enjoy the beauty and surroundings of the lake and of our property. Over the years, well, I should say, the deck wasn't really in great shape when we moved into the home. There was a hot tub that was sitting in the middle of the deck that was broken. We had to pull that out over the years. My husband has replaced boards, stripped it, restained it, painted, and it is just well past usability at this point in time. We've been waiting for several years to be able to replace the deck, waiting through COVID, the high lumber prices afterwards. And we have contracted with Green Shield Decking in order to replace the deck, which really has to be completely torn down. The deck is actually, we have a walkout basement, so the deck is on the first level of the home. You walk out onto the deck, and then there are steps down into the, the grass area, into, you know, the walkout basement area. So, the structure is, the current structure is not usable. It's pretty obvious. If you look at it, it's not usable. And really, all we're trying to do, I think it's a pretty simple request, is utilize the existing footprint of the current deck. We're not trying to move it at all over to the north side, which is where the property line in question is. We're going to utilize that exact same footprint. Overall, the size of the deck is going to remain almost exactly the same, except we are cutting approximately two feet off of the west side of the deck. But we want to just, we love, we love the size of the deck, and we want to basically just utilize the footprint that is there, but just replace it with decking that is safer because the current material is not safe and, quite frankly, more attractive because it looks so bad right now. We are, we are lucky, as you can see in the packet, we are lucky that we have the support of our neighbors. I am sure they would love us to replace the deck because it is a bit of an eyesore, especially if you're out on the lake, you can see our deck. We really could come up with another design, but we would prefer not to. In fact, there is a row of trees that separates our property from our neighbor to the north that lines the deck. If we have to shift the deck design over, we then have this weird space of about three to four feet in between the trees that currently line the deck. And then, when the deck would start, which just quite frankly doesn't make any, any sense from an aesthetic viewpoint. So, you know, we, we come before you today just to ask to allow us to replace what is currently there. We're not changing anything. We're not encroaching any further, and, and appreciate your consideration of our request.
All right. Thank you very much. There's any members of the public that would like to speak on it?
Good morning. Good afternoon and good evening. I'm Laura Cloud, and I am the north house that she's referring to, another 5875 Boys' Eel Drive. And I too have a walkout basement that goes onto the, onto the lake. It is really a beautiful neighborhood. I moved in probably two years maybe before Carrie and Brandon moved in, so I've been there just a little bit longer. And there are trees, like Carrie said, that are between those two houses. And it just seems strange to me, now hearing the history, that the property lines weren't established until 1993 because my house was built in 1977. So, anyway, their deck is very private from mine. You know, I can't really see into it because of this row of trees, and it's not caused any kind of problems ever since I've been there. I replaced my deck about two years ago for the same reason, the decks hadn't been maintained very well. And we've maintained pretty much the same, again, footprint, we just altered the steps a little bit. But I'm in support of, of a new deck for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we will move into board time then.
I have a question of the applicant. Go ahead. It, you said you're just essentially replacing the same footprint, especially on the side that is encroaching.
Right.
I'm looking at the numbers that Mr. Chapman put in the summary, and the numbers don't match somehow. So, I was just, I was having a little difficulty to begin with.
So, the existing deck has, I kind of call it the nose of the deck. So, like as it's going to the water, there's like a peak.
Right.
A point that comes out. And so, the new deck, we're just going to...
Flatten it out.
Flatten it out, right? So, we're just essentially taking out that wasted peak.
And the...
So, nothing that's going over or closer to the line, it's actually going down towards the water.
Okay. And based on the pictures, and that's where you've got your grill and some other chairs in there behind the Arbroontite on that strand that's on the north side of your house?
The grill, yeah, the grill is on the, yep, the side of the Porsche, yep.
Yep.
All right. I thought that's what I was hearing from you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't reading something incorrectly, so thank you.
Yeah, so the width will be the same, we just take off that little point, which will shorten it.
Okay.
Yep.
Since you're there, what is the difference? And maybe you already answered it, but I see the four feet 7 inches and then three feet 5 inches. Is that...
It's angled. Well...
The property line is angled, so at the...
Well, I think, are you talking about, so the, we're asking the variance of, help me out, Keith, three feet?
Yeah, five inches.
Three feet 5 inches, because that's the difference. That's how far we're poking into the eight-foot variance.
So, the eight feet would go an additional three and a half feet from that 4.7.
Got you.
Because that corner is what's closest to the line.
Yeah.
It all kind of sits at a weird angle.
Those angles.
Appears to be a function of changing from a condo development to individual property owners. And the deck was probably built when it was a condo, and, and they didn't take that into account when they were putting down property lines, so...
Doesn't even look like the...
Doesn't even look like the, uh, the house would fit the setbacks if you.
Yeah.
Variance for the house, so.
That's my question.
Thank you.
I think we can just move right into the criteria. Um, so for number one, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure. I'd say definitely. For sure.
I agree.
Um, not self-created. I don't think so. It's, was a deck that was existing there beforehand, so.
Unless they drew the property lines, probably not.
Right. Strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms would result in practical difficulties. Yeah, I could see that. It's, would definitely ruin the deck. Granting the variance is the minimum action necessary. Yeah, I can, I can meet that.
I agree.
And granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land. Uh, as we heard from the neighbor, I don't think it will. And since it's same profile and everything, really don't think it will. And lastly, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and purposes. And I think so, considering all the support that they've received.
I agree.
Same here.
If there are no other comments, I will.
Make a motion to approve granted variance as requested in, uh, ZBA case number twenty-four dash oh two at fifty-eight sixty-seven Boiseale in Hazlet, Michigan.
The second. And member precise?
Yes.
Number Curtis?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So the ZBA case number twenty-four dash oh two at fifty-eight sixty-seven Boiseale Drive passes. Thank you.
Building the deck out of?
The builder, huh?
We, um, we use, uh, for the frame of it, we will use KDA kilogram lumber that was treated twice and then it's also number one grade. So we do want forty-five years. Um, and then, um, we will be using a true north double sided composite that is lifetime warranty as well as involved even in branding of a lifetime warranty as well.
Thank you.
Don't enjoy that.
Very much.
This guy knows what he's talking about. Thank you.
Moving on?
Yeah, moving on, sorry.
All right. Okay, ZBA case number twenty-four dash zero three, uh, twenty-one twenty Saginaw Highway. Uh, the applicant's requesting a variance to construct a nine hundred and forty-five square foot patio addition to the existing bowling alley located at twenty-one twenty Saginaw Highway. The submitted site plan shows the existing twenty-two thousand ten square foot building with the proposed patio on the south side of the building. Um, so our assessing records indicate the building was constructed in nineteen sixty, sits on approximately three point one acres and is zone C two commercial. In two thousand and twelve, there were, uh, variances granted for wall signage, uh, impervious surface coverage and a freezer addition. The proposed patio will eliminate five of the required parking spaces for the site. The parking calculations are based on the use of the building, which contains, uh, the bowling alley and restaurant and bar. So our parking requirements for bowling alleys requires five spaces per each alley for a total of a hundred and twenty parking spaces. And the requirements for the restaurant and bar is, uh, one space for every seventy-five square feet of usable floor area plus one space for every four seats for a total of fifty-eight parking spaces required. Um, so total hundred and seventy-eight are required for the site. Um, the applicant is requesting a variance of five parking spaces for the addition.
All right. If your applicant would like to come up?
Other? Uh, my name is Brian Hagan. Um, our address says, uh, twenty-one twenty East Saginaw, uh, in East Lansing. And I think you did, you know, staff did a great job of kind of outlining what we're asking for. Um, it's a patio, uh, at the front of the building. And, uh, you know, we, we would be, uh, potentially removing, you know, up to five spaces of the required one hundred and seventy-eight spaces. Um, without kind of going through my entire packet there, obviously you have that in front of you, but, um, we did try to touch on kind of two aspects of our request. You know, the more technical aspect and then kind of the, I don't know, I guess call it just sort of the overall feel, uh, of the area and why we feel like this would be a, a benefit, not only to our building, but of course, just kind of to the general area and the, and the direction that that corridor is going. Again, just, I won't go over all of it, but, um, specific to sort of the actual loss of the spots. Um, you know, based on some of our calculations, uh, from the data, uh, from our leagues, open bowling, uh, we've included some pictures and things like that in there to kind of illustrate that. But just kind of in our, um, in our estimation, certainly, you know, from being in there and, and reviewing our security cameras, uh, we feel like we have a, you know, an abundance of, of parking, uh, even on our busiest nights. Um, so we don't feel like it would be, you know, hardship for our customers or staff or anything like that. Um, and then I think, you know, it's, it's also important to note, and it's, it's sort of re-mentioned, I guess, mentioned again, sort of when we go through some of the criteria, but, um, it's impossible, I guess, not to mention that, you know, the most comparable site would be spare time, even though it's not located in East Lansing or Meridian Township. Um, it is a building that is, uh, you know, bowling alley, of course, with a restaurant and actually quite a few other activities. Um, and they are, their building is actually twice the size of our building and they have less parking spots than we do. So, um, I do think that's a, a pretty important note. Um, but I think also, you know, we've addressed kind of some of the other issues, um, you know, with, again, with the pictures and, and some of our own internal data. Um, and then of course, kind of from a, we're also in real estate, I guess. So, so from a, a real estate standpoint, we've tried to incorporate, um, you know, our opinion on that, kind of based on some of the development in the area, the other, um, restaurants or lack thereof, I guess, in the area and, and the need for patio spaces, um, not just in general, but of course, since COVID, um, the popularity of that and, and how that attracts, of course, customers, but also further development and, and so on. So, um, I won't go through each of the criteria, but I'm certainly, I, I'd, I'd love to answer any questions that you have on that. I did try to, you know, detail each of the criteria, uh, because I do feel like we've touched on each of those five. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And then I guess the, the final note, uh, I don't think that, again, I don't think that we would need additional parking ever. Uh, but should that need arise, we already do have a relationship with the church. Um, in fact, they have been using our parking, uh, for a long time, actually, prior to us even owning the site. And we have a good relationship with them. Um, and, and, you know, we've spoken to them and I think, you know, that there would be an opportunity, should that need arise, in an extreme example, you know, to be able to utilize their site, um, given that our hours are certainly different from a peak need standpoint.
Is that? Go ahead. May, forgive me if I get it wrong. Is, is that, is this the pins and?
Right, so I, maybe I should have touched on that first. Uh, so Marvel Lanes was the original name.
That's, okay.
City Limits East was then the next name. We purchased the building and business, uh, approximately seven months ago and what, three, four months ago, changed the name to Pins and Pints.
Okay.
All the same site, just new name.
The church is New Hope next door.
Yes, to the west, yep.
Um, I also had a quick question. Are any of the parking spaces that are being, uh, covered by this patio, are any of them, uh, handicap accessible parking spaces?
So my brother might be able to address that a little bit better. Um, we are going to still maintain the same number of, of accessible spaces. And we do have some, um, I don't know if you can, if it's on the diagram there, it should show, in the front as well as, um, off to the west side as well. So we, we, we put the, the jog in the, the patio to maintain the van accessible space.
Okay.
Right there, yep.
Do we maintain the current number?
Yeah, I guess the answer is yes. They're right, kind of where your cursor is, uh, right there. There's a, there's what, three?
Yeah, I mean, you could change a little bit of the sidewalk to allow for the access point to change slightly. We will.
Absolutely, we're going to maintain them, I guess, is, is the answer. Um, but then over to the west side, kind of around the corner, there are additional spaces there as well. Handicap spaces, yep.
Gotcha, thank you.
Public.
Yep. Uh, if there's any public comment? All right. Uh, with that being said, I guess we'll move into board time. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Couple of, oh, for Keith, that's a, yeah.
I'm right here.
So, um, you went through the criteria in terms of how many parking spaces per lane, right? Or per alley, right? Like if it's for one alley, the five spaces or something like that, what's that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what that calculation was that I went and put in there, yes.
Okay. Is that, is that our ordinance or?
That's our ordinance, yes.
Is there an ordinance specific to patio space?
No.
Okay.
No.
Then, and then the second thing is, is this something that we can do? Based on the ordinance that you read to us, can we allow, you know, a hundred and seventy-three versus one seventy-eight, given your calculation?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's why we're here. Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, can we go, is that going against the ordinance and is that?
Always the variances.
Yeah, the variances.
Of the ordinance.
By definition, that's what it is, but, okay, I, all right.
For discussion, I, uh, over the years on the planning commission, it's become sort of apparent that our parking ordinance is out of date. It probably requires more parking spots in many buildings than are actually needed. Um, a reduction of five out of a hundred and seventy-eight is a pretty minor alteration to the, to the standards. Um, and I believe that planning is even looking over the parking ordinance to determine whether those numbers need to be changed anyway.
They will be, yes.
I thought I heard Tim saying he was in the process of looking at that, so, um, I, I'd suggest we go to the criteria.
All right. Um, let's talk about the first one. Um, unique circumstances. I, I think I could meet unique circumstances just because of allowable space on the site for a bowling alley.
I, I agree. I, I think it's, it's a landlocked piece of land as all are. And so there's limitations as to what you can use it. This seems like a reasonable application or use of the land and the, the available spaces, what's there. And so I think, um, I think I would say that the unique circumstance exists in this town.
All right. And by extension, not self-created because, you know, they didn't choose the, the size of the law. Um, restriction interpretation enforcement will prevent the owner from using the property for a primitive purpose? I would say, I would say, yeah.
This is a permitted purpose for that property and C two zoning, so I would say that's true.
Yeah. Granting the variance is the minimum action necessary to carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Uh, I would say yes for minimum action. I really appreciate that it's the same number of handicap accessible spaces. And I mean, like you said, five spaces out of a hundred and seventy-eight is very minimal in terms of reduction, so.
Number four, I can't see any adverse effect on adjacent land.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think, I don't think it's affecting anyone around. Uh, and five, uh, consistent with public interest. I'd say it's, it's a business, you know, for public enjoyment, so definitely.
I agree. We do want to encourage our businesses to be successful and this is a minimal change alteration from the, uh, the parking requirements that will facilitate them, I hope, in expanding your business and, and succeeding. So I think that is met also.
All right. Uh, then motion to approve ZBA case number twenty-four dash zero three at twenty-one twenty Saginaw Highway.
I will support that motion.
All right.
You did it.
Sorry. You're fine. Remember your size?
Yes.
Remember McCurtis?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So the ZBA case number twenty-four dash zero three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to hold off on the election of officers, obviously, because we don't have a full board. So we'll do that for next time. But, um, public remarks and then adjourn.
Yep. Have a good one. So just any public.
Any public remark, yep.
Okay. Okay. Um, any board member comments?
I'm right here.
All right, then, uh, the ZBA meeting for March twentieth, twenty twenty-four is hereby adjourned.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you for bringing me in.
You did look great.